Welcome everyone to our regular board meeting, October 22. We will begin by calling the meeting to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and would you please remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) 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 Thank you.
May we see you. First up is the approval of the agenda. Can y'all hear me in the back? Approval of the agenda. Tonight, we will approve the minutes from our last meeting of September 17. Correspondence, public forum, special recognition, facilities and operations, finance, assessment accountability, exceptional children, human resources, superintendent report, and then the board will go into executive session. So at this time, I will ask the board members to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
(Inaudible).
Motion has been made by Ms. Sinfingers, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from September 17. They were in our board packet. We will take a motion to approve those minutes.
(Inaudible).
Second.
Again, motion has been made by Ms. Sinfingers, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Are there any further questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Correspondence? None. Public forum, we do have someone here tonight. Detective Rich Wistaki. I hope I pronounced your name right. I'll let you introduce yourself and also would you just let us know what company you're with? Thank you.
So my name is Detective Rich Wistaki. I am a 30-year veteran of law enforcement in Naperville, Illinois.
Oh, excuse me. I'm so sorry.
That's right.
He usually does this. I've asked us, we do have a statement that we do need to read real quick.
Sure.
Sorry.
As provided by the Board, Policy DEDH, Public Participation, the Board allocates time during each regular board meeting to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board. Individuals who have requested an opportunity to speak by completing approved cards will now be recognized and given an opportunity to come forward and speak. The public is asked to keep in mind that this is a limited public forum, which means the Board reserves the right to stop a speaker and/or in the public participation sessions for violations of policy governing the public forum. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes. All speakers addressing the Board should identify themselves, give the name of the organization and they represent, if any, and state the particular matter they wish to address. No speaker will be allowed to raise complaints or concerns directed against any individual, employee, or student of the district during a public participation session. Any such concerns or complaints should be presented to the superintendent or Board Chair directly rather than presented during the public participation session.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Detective Rich Wistaki. Been in law enforcement for 30 years. I retired in 2018. I'm currently a Deputy Sheriff in Putnam County, Tennessee. The reason why I'm here is I am an exchange member for Detroit County Exchange Club. The National Exchange Club has adopted my program that I created with the National Association of School Resource Officers. I've given you all a packet that's in front of you that explains it, and basically, this targets school shooters and school threats. I've been in Internet Crimes Against Children Detective for 25 years. And so what I did was I used that information to help out schools and SROs to create a program on how to stop school shootings. In 2021, the United States Secret Service came out with something called the Threat Assessment Survey Study. And what they found was 24% over the last 12 years of the school shooters had posted online what they wanted to do before they did it. This is called leakage. So I host a three-day class all over the country. I was in Michigan for the last two weeks, here on Mid, and yesterday, we met with Nor Charleston in Berkeley County, and when I showed them what the program does, they were all in. The top page of your packet shows that we have already set up a training for December 8th, 9th, and 10th, and we can have from 25 to 50 people. They assured me that this is going to be filled. The National Exchange Club is partnering, doing this program across the country, and we go almost to every state. So just to outline our success, last year, we stopped 55 school shootings that were reported, shootings and swattings. And it starts with something called the ECPA, Electronics Communication Privacy Act. When you're an Internet Crimes Detective, we use this all the time because when death or great bodily harm is about to happen, we invoke this law and then the social networks give us the information within hours. So we often in class have threats come in to the SROs that are attending the class, and we handle it right there. Last week, we had number 23. They had a kid came in and said, over a threat on Snapchat, said that he had an AR-15 with a gun in the bathroom, people better start running. We tracked it within 15 minutes to Canada, right to his house. So it's, this program is proven, and the reason why I'm here is the, who attends this class? Not only law enforcement attends this class, but it's mandatory that your IT people attend the class, your social workers, your deans, your principal superintendents, because I get everybody on the same page. You'd be surprised at how many school officials and law enforcement have no idea what web filter you have on your Chromebooks, what Internet service that comes to your school, what phone service comes to your school, who gets those alerts, and we hammer all that out by the time they get ready to leave my class. It's a very successful program, and I just wanted to come here to invite your people and be able to train them as well.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
We'll turn this over to our superintendent and our safety director.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Next up is our special recognitions, EOC awards, and everyday heroes.
Come on up, Mr. White. Just like we did last month, we began our push to really recognize our students for their academic successes. We recognize our middle school and our elementary school students for perfect scores on SC Ready. Pretty outstanding achievement. So then today, the decision was to make sure we recognize our students on the EOC, US History, Biology, English 2, and Algebra 1, and how they performed last year, either in the fall or in the spring. And so tonight, we'll be recognizing all of our students who had a perfect score last year of a 100. And Mr. White is going to help me with the presentation.
So we're going to start with those who made a 100 on the Biology 1 EOC. Their first name is Landon Robey. Landon Robey. Dylan Shuler.
Good mom. (Laughter).
And last but not least for Biology, Dylan Smith. Now, we're going to move on to the scholars who had a Biology, who had a 100 on the Biology 2 EOC, Victor Abels. Ryan Hernandez. Last but not least, Lillian Burgh. And there are many would argue with you that US History and Algebra 2 are the hardest exams, and US History some would argue is the hardest, and so we have quite a few that 100 on that, starting with Trinity Ramsey. Didn't make it, but congratulations to her. Olivia Christensen. So I'm going to tell you a funny story about Reagan, but I forgot her name. So these scholars are known, they're never called by the principals, so when I called them, I said, hey, y'all spending the day, this will be figured out. And Reagan had the most unique rebuttal with that. Stop playing in my face, Mr. White. So congratulations. And last but not least, and this person is a repeat offender, but they actually, in a league of their own with this one, they're the only 100 at Woodland in Algebra 1, and that is Elise Dow.
All of you come behind the board members and line up. Your picture. And I will say, the company that we got the plaques from went with the smaller version of a plaque, so we will be having a larger version of the plaque for you here in the near future, because the accomplishment deserves a larger plaque. Having a round of applause for this student. So pretty sure a lot of these students have another EOC coming up here this year. So we expect to see you back here next year for the same reason. Next month, so one of the programs, we're going to talk a little bit about it tonight, is iReady and recognizing students and teachers who are doing an outstanding job with iReady. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but so next month in November, that'll be our recognition for our students doing a great job with that. So moving forward, we're going to get into the Everyday Hero program. And, you know, we started this, this year with recognizing individuals across the district, teachers, classified staff. Really doesn't matter the role in this district, it's just about acknowledging people who just do exceptional work. And exceptional work with an exceptional attitude. I think that's a big piece. Dorchester School District 4 is delighted to continue its Everyday Hero Employee Recognition Program, celebrating the exceptional individuals who play crucial roles in the success of our schools. These hard-working employees often operate behind the scenes, ensuring the smooth functioning of our schools while contributing to the education and well-being of our students. Monthly, we shine a spotlight on these dedicated staff members, offering our appreciation for their unwavering commitment. Each Everyday Hero receives a certificate of appreciation and a distinguished coin from the superintendent, a token of the district's deep gratitude for their remarkable service. So our first Everyday Hero for the month of October is Lorraine Coats. Come on up, Lorraine.
Oh, yes, nice. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to make you stay right there while I read this about you.
Oh, yes.
Awkward moment.
Yes, okay.
All right, Ms. Coats, for our first October Everyday Hero, we are thrilled to honor Ms. Lorraine Coats, who serves as an administrative assistant for the Facilities and Operations Department. Not only does she handle the intricacies, intricacies, of the operations team, but she is also the first voice people hear when they call the district office. Nominated by Mr. James Martin, interim chief of operations, Ms. Coats was praised for embodying the qualities of a true operations professional. "I am proud to nominate Ms. Lorraine Coats for the Everyday Hero Award. Ms. Coats checks all the boxes of a true operations professional, consistently demonstrating exceptional qualities that make her an invaluable asset to the operations team," said Mr. Martin. Nice guy. "From her courteous interactions with colleagues and customers to her outstanding organizational skills, Ms. Coats plays a key role in the smooth operation of the department. Her communication ensures that every team member is informed, which enhances overall productivity. Mr. Martin also highlighted her efficiency, noting that she approaches every task with diligence and a proactive mindset, always ready with thoughtful solutions. Her attention to detail and commitment to excellence not only improves our daily operations, but makes sure all of my reports are proofread, according to Mr. Martin." Ms. Coats, Ms. Coats's positive attitude and willingness to assist others creates a supportive atmosphere that encourages teamwork across the board. Mr. Martin concluded by saying, "She truly is the glue that holds our facilities department together, and her contributions have a lasting impact on our success." For her unwavering dedication, professionalism, and exceptional support, Dorchester School District 4 proudly congratulates Ms. Lorraine Coats as our Everyday Hero. And behind the scenes, with that $16 million grant we got, is Ms. Coats processing all the payments. And, you know, when we do our checkbooks and our bank statements for a couple thousand dollars, just think about it times 100 or 1,000. Our second Everyday Hero for October is Ms. Alexina Bredman. Come on up, Ms. Bredman. Ms. Bredman works in the Department of Assessment and Accountability as the district's Power School Coordinator, a role that is vital to the operation and success of Dorchester School District 4. Nominated by Shalissa Bowman, Ms. Bredman is described as an essential member of the district's team who plays a critical role in maintaining the systems that drive our school's efficiency. On top of her general job responsibilities, Ms. Bredman coordinated the integration of the South Carolina Department of Education EdFi data publishing and EdPlan platforms to Power School. She also ensured that all St. George Middle School and Harleyville-Ridgsville Middle School software, including instructional, assessment, and digital media, was transferred and operational under Woodland Middle School. This massive task took weeks to complete and required Ms. Bredman to work late evenings and weekends to meet deadlines and ensure everything ran smoothly. Her commitment to the district's success was evident in her relentless dedication and hard work. Ms. Bredman's efforts have had a significant impact on the district's operations, enabling more efficient data management and enhancing the overall functionality of essential software systems. Her perseverance and attention to detail are testament, testaments to her professionalism and dedication. For these reasons, Dorchester School District 4 is proud to congratulate Ms. Alexina Bredman on being named an October Everyday Hero. Thank you very much, Ms. Bredman. For anybody who doesn't know, Power School is what runs our entire school district and every district in South Carolina, and that's where all of our funding to operate our district comes from. If that's not right, we're in a lot of trouble. So there's a lot of pressure on Ms. Bredman, and anybody who knows her, she definitely works a lot to make sure it's accurate. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman, and congratulations to all you students, and you have really set the bar high. We thank y'all for all the hard work, and also, Ms. Coats and Ms. Bredman, we thank you both too, and it was quite an honor for y'all to be selected this month by your peers. We definitely congratulate all of you. Next up, Facility and Operations, Mr. Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I tell you, that student recognition, the staff recognition really highlights our board meetings.
It does.
Not saying they weren't great before, but it really enhances it.
Certainly does.
Love that. So I gave a top 10 list of items for you to look over, and I'm just going to highlight a few. We've gotten started with our capital projects on the first $4 million that we received from the state, and the top three projects we're working on right now that we have a timeline for is our playground renovations, and that's renovating every playground we have in the district. So one at Clay Hill, which we're looking to expand and include another area into, three playgrounds at Harleyville Elementary, three playgrounds at Williams Memorial. Those are pretty extensive projects. When you look at grounds, we have trees we need to remove, we're looking at resurfacing, new fencing, so, and getting all the equipment on order. That's in progress, we're at the tail end of that, that's going to be exciting. Roof repairs, we've got two major roofs that we're working on, is Williams Memorial Gym and Harleyville Gym, because those were in very bad shape, so they're top priority, and fingers crossed, we can get that done over the fall, the winter break, Christmas break. As part of getting water to Harleyville Elementary School, we have to demolish the existing OPEC building. So we're on a timeline for that, so right now, we've totally moved out of the area at Harleyville-Ridgsville Middle, that admin area, so we're renovating that to move the staff of OPEC into that area, and it'll be a nice space for them to have a main entrance to come into, be part of the school, and there's a work-based learning lab that we're working on, it's going to be very exciting when we get to that part. So we've got that area cleaned out, we've got crews in now working on that space, and because our goal is to turn over a plot of land to Dorchester County in January, then they're going to start putting the metering station, and then we'll work on tying in water to the school, which is also very exciting, long overdue. I'm going to skip down to some technology projects. So Director Gleese applying our district to participate in the Schools and Libraries Cybersecurity Pilot Program, which is $2 million program that schools could put in for and is selected. It's a three-year term, and that will give us a variety of cybersecurity services and equipment. So the pilot program will evaluate the effectiveness of using universal service funding to support cybersecurity services and equipment to protect our schools, and if this program works out, they can look at implementing that on a permanent basis, which would be great for us. Transportation projects, so we finalized, and we have the new bus cameras and bus hard drives on order, that's something we're looking at doing over Christmas break as well. If, if everything comes in, we're also looking at additional base station to communicate to buses, so we want to improve our bus communication, but also our bus security cameras as well. There are new wide-angle cameras with higher resolution and a hard drive that'll retain footage longer. That's something that, our cameras work, but as technology changes, we want to, we want to change with it and stay current. Food nutrition projects, as part of our asset condition assessment, we compiled a list of any of our assets that were in poor critical shape, and we had a couple of our lunchrooms that, like Woodland, for example, has the original equipment, and we have some equipment that's been failing and just putting a lot of money into, and it's out of life cycle now. So by doing that assessment, we've got a detailed list of now assets that we can use as funding for. So a couple of our kitchens are going to get a lot of new equipment, and Director Earl is working on a grant submission for the National School Lunch Program, and that will also, if he gets that grant, give us $20,000 for equipment as well. So some exciting stuff there. For anybody that attended the Woodland game, you heard our new sound system, but unfortunately, you didn't see the video board. It's like we get one or the other these days, because both of those systems, they're towards the end of their life as well. So we got a nice sounding system that's ours, we're working on the video board, and I'm looking at pricing on fixing and replacing that board as well. Harleyville Elementary Media Project is pretty exciting. So St. George Middle School Media Center had very nice furniture. It's the nice wood, solid wood furniture, and we did measurements, and we were able to take all the old laminate type out of Harleyville Elementary and replace it with the furniture from St. George Middle School. So they gained a lot more shelving space, now they have matching tables, matching computer tables, matching bookshelves, looks really good. The media specialist is excited, and we're going to build her a new circulation desk. But that's just repurposing assets that we have that are in great condition, so. And of course, there's a recap on the back of our work order summary that I include that just shows how many work orders that have been completed in our system, and also gives you an overview by school, so which schools are putting in the most amount. Woodland High School being the number one. Woodland High School being the number one. So any questions?
I guess. On the bus transportation equip, um, new stuff they're putting in, is that is there gonna be a way that the parents can find out where their children are coming home and all?
That's, uh, state, um, software that's in the works right now. And hopefully, we'll hear something in the next month or two, because we're looking at going to like the app iPads on buses to where you can scan in students. That helps you track better. But right now, the app that they were using to track students wasn't working out well. So that doesn't work. But yes, that's a hundred percent in the works.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your hard work. Next up, Ms. Penny Hoto, Budget, final.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, all I had this month was my basic board report. If you guys have looked over and have any questions?
Do y'all have any questions, board members? I don't.
Good job.
Thank you, though. It's great.
Thank you.
Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Shalisa Bowman, School Report Cards.
Each year, schools and districts across the state of South Carolina are issued a report card. These report cards provide information about each school and district, including test performance, teacher quality, student safety, and so much more. Tonight, I'll be presenting information from our 2024 DD4 Report Card, which was released October the fifteenth of this year. Next slide. He has to do it. It's not working for me. So tonight, I'll talk to you about, um, we I'll be presenting our district academic data as well as our environmental data, um, school ratings. We'll talk about as a district, what we saw far as data analysis for the next steps. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. Okay, for our academic achievement, um, the data for the first two lines for South Carolina ELA and South Carolina Ready Math. For ELA, our data was, I'm sorry, excuse me, forty percent, forty point four percent met or exceeds, excuse me. Um, our math was twenty nine point five percent met or exceeds. The data is slightly above what it was last year, which was good. We love for increase. When you look at the state, we're below the state, but however, we are on track for making those filling those gaps. For ELC, English Two and ELC Algebra, fifty five point two percent, um, of our students scored C or higher for English Two and thirteen point five percent scored C or higher for Algebra. Unfortunately, those were a slight decrease from the year before. However, I'll tell you later in the slides what we're gonna do to address those. Next slide. Preparing for Success. This year, um, because we had a pilot test for science, we do not have data for fourth and sixth grade for science, however, we do have biology scores. So for DD4, forty point one percent of our students scored a C or higher in Biology. In accordance to the state, that wasn't too bad with forty seven point nine percent. For US History and Constitution, it was twenty six percent, which was slightly lower than the state. However, both of those were increases from the previous year. On the far right side of the slide, this talks about elementary schools specifically. Kindergartners, when they start school, have to take an assessment called the Kindergarten Readiness Assessment. So once we give all of our kindergartners assessment, we could we get a compiled score. So thirty nine percent of our students were on track for being ready for school last year. For our thirty third grade readiness, for ELA, forty point nine percent of our students are on track for success and math is eighteen point eight percent. For our second grade readiness, ELA was twenty six point eight percent, math was nineteen point one percent. I will say that all of this data for our third grade and second grade readiness is lower than it was the previous year. However, the assessment that we used was a new assessment. In previous years, we used Renaissance Star. Last year, we used iReady Diagnostic. So the difference in the scores have a lot to do with the assessment. Next slide, please. For multilanguage progress, our multilanguage learners, it is the goal of the state that any student that's learning English will become proficient within five years of enrolling within a public school. So when we look at our subgroup for MLs with their progress toward proficiency, our progress is pretty good. It's at seventy point five percent, way higher than the state's. Um, for our subgroup that achieved proficiency is ten point one percent. But keep in mind, they have five years in which to do that, so. And both of those were higher than the year before. Next slide. For student progress, this slide talks about how children are performing when it comes to their subgroups, how they're doing overall, as well as our lowest twenty percent of our students. So when we look at all of our students with all of their demographics, forty five point nine percent earned their points that they were supposed to earn for their overall achievement, which is slightly above the state. For all of our students, when we look at their overall progress, it was forty five point three percent, which also was above the state. Our lowest twenty percent of our students was fifty two point two, which also was above the state. Students meeting median annual targets was forty seven point five, which was slightly below the state. And our students meeting added value was slightly below the state at twenty nine point four percent. All of those were an increase except for the last one. Our graduation rate, our on-time graduation rate for last year was eighty six point one percent, and it was a decrease from the year prior to this. College and Career Ready. Students in the graduation cohort who was college or career ready was fifty nine point six percent. Students in the graduation cohort that was college and career ready was eighty point one percent. Students in the graduation cohort who are college-ready was twenty point five percent. And students in the cohort that was career-ready was fifty seven point two percent. We had an increase for students ready for college, but a slight decrease for students that were on track for career readiness. For high school student success, when we look at all of our student success, for DD4, it was eighty four point three. Our percentage of first-year students on track was seventy eight point five, and our five-year student success is ninety one point four percent. All of those are gains except for the five-year student success. The next section is about the environment. Next slide. So for our classroom envi- um, environment, we surveyed a total of a hundred and fifty, um, teachers. I'm sorry, we had a hundred and fifty teachers last year. Um, the percentage of teachers that returned from the previous year was seventy seven point nine, which was a slight decrease. Our prime instructional time also was a slight decrease at eighty five point nine. Our student and teacher ratio was an increase for twenty two point five. And the percentage of inexperienced teachers was six point seven, which was down from twelve point six. For school safety. Each year during our survey, the parents and teachers and students are asked specific questions. Some of those questions actually end up on the report card. And these are the questions for the teachers and parents that show. For our parents, it asks, "My child feels safe at school?" And our rating was ninety five point four. "My child's teachers and school staff prevent or stop bullying at school?" Was a ninety point five percent. And both of those are increases from the previous year. When you have the evaluations by teacher, it says, "I feel safe at my school before and after hours." It's ninety eight point three percent that strongly agree. "The rules or for behavior are enforced at my school," that's a ninety point one. And that's a great increase. We had a twenty-three point increase for that one. So that was wonderful. Next slide. School Climate. Out of all of our results from our opinion survey, the percentage of teachers, students, and parents that were satisfied with their learning, teachers was ninety three point six, students were eighty five point two, and parents was ninety three point two. Percentage satisfied with social and physical environment, teachers was ninety five point four, students was eighty six point two, and parents was ninety four percent. Percent satisfied with homeschool relations, ninety two point five for teachers, ninety two point three for students, and ninety two point seven for parents. And all of those are increases. Once the state looks at all of our information, each school receives a rating. So this year, these are the ratings for our schools. Clay Hill Elementary, you can go back a slide, sorry. Can you back up one? There you go. Clay Hill's rating, they receive the overall point score of forty-nine, and their rating was average. Harleyville Elementary School had a forty-two, and their rating was average. Williams Memorial had an overall rating of fifty-three, and their average was good. Harleyville-Richville Middle had an overall average of thirty-three, and their rating was below average. The St. George Middle School had a overall rating of forty-three. They were average. And the Wolverines, the high school, overall rating was fifty-two, and they were average. You just thank you. Compared to the previous year, that's what this slide shows. So we can see that Clay Hill went down a level. They went from good to average. Harleyville Elementary School went from unsatisfactory to average. They went up two levels. Williams Memorial went up from average to good. St. George Middle stayed on track from average to average. Harleyville-Richville Middle went from unsatisfactory to below average. And Woodland High School was from average to average. So great job to all of our schools. We had no unsatisfactory schools this year. That says a lot. So that's a great job for all of our schools. So when we looked at all of our data, there are some things that we learned that we wanted to make sure that we addressed last year moving into this year. So one of the things was math. We know that math was, um, there's some challenges in math. And so we put a lot of time and effort in providing some curriculum development and also some core content knowledge instruction into math as well as ELA, focusing specifically on elementarys and high schools as well. We have PLCs where we're working, where teachers are working and collaborating together, working with formative assessments to make sure we're getting high-quality instruction, making sure that we're focused on targeted intervention for students that have some struggles or challenges in the classroom, to make sure that we're working with every child. Career and technology support, we've increased that, um, working on our workforce and needs for what our students need to be successful when they leave us. And also making sure that we're focusing on every child all day, every day. Our district goal for this year is by the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on the State Department School Report Card, that we have at least three average-rated schools and at least two good-rated schools. And that is the end of this presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, board members? I'm just curious, Ms. Bowman, on the, um, school climate.
Yes, ma'am.
And the parents, um, percent satisfied with the learning environment, the teachers ninety-three and the students eighty-five. Is that is that because y'all took their cell phones away or because you're making them? Y'all are making them.
No, ma'am. That was sure of that was sure of on this year's report.
I'm just really curious. And both of those, the the both of those, the teachers are ninety-five and the kids are eighty-six. I'm just curious.
Yes, ma'am. We, um, we actually did a little deep dive with that. They actually asked a little bit more pointed questions just since that. And students sometimes feel like we don't challenge them enough. They want to do more than just sit there and read a book or listen to the teacher talk. They want to kind of get their hands in there and get the work in. And so just making it more hands-on, engaging for the student is what they're asking for. They'd rather be doing something than just sitting and getting, um, with that one, so.
Well, that's that's good.
And that's what we want.
Ours is curious. Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
You're welcome.
Good report. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you. Ms. Monica Turner, Exceptional Children. Thank you, Ms. Monica.
Just a little in addition to what you already have. So good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for my new home. We're excited. We're all very excited about, yeah, moving. And, uh, we can, when we're in the office, we can hear kids kinda out there. We love to get out in the schools. But being able to be in a school with that energy around us all day long is is gonna be really exciting. So I wanted to share the date for our Fall Unified Games. I know it's been on on Facebook and Instagram and, you know, out there, but it is Thursday at Woodland High School. Thank you again, Mr. White, for allowing us to have that here. So we're very excited about that. And we'd love to see you guys there. Um, it's gonna be a beautiful day too, by the way. Really thankful. All right. So I wanted to share some exciting news with y'all. We have partnered with the South Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation Department, and we got a seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollar grant through them to provide post-secondary training to students, all kinds of work-based learning, career exploration, and that sort of thing. And so what I did was, on the next page, you have kind of our Victory SC Planning Timeline. So you can see the grades of students at seventh through twelfth grade is the students that'll be participating in this. Um, so you can see the grades of that will be impacted and kind of our schedule. We've actually already completed all of September. We're almost all the way through October. So we're going into classes and we're doing instruction with students. We're taking them out in the community, doing community-based instruction. Uh, it's really, um, engaging for the students, which maybe, Ms. Bowman, maybe that will help with some of that hands-on stuff. So that's exciting, yes? Um, anyway, uh, so that is what the Victory SC is kind of geared towards. And when we submit, three times this year, we'll submit all of the work that we have done, then they send us a check for for that work. And we show student responses and that kind of thing. And then that money that comes into the district can be used to increase programming in any way. Um, so it's not limited to just post-secondary. We can, you know, put that in K through twelve to increase everything. Um, and then our goal for next year is to double that, um, amount of funding. And, uh, they have assured us if we show that we have met all of the criteria on this timeline, this is the timeline and activities that we created. And if we show them that we have done all of these, they have assured us that they will match that and double it for next year. So I'm I'm really excited.
Get that in writing.
That's right. No, we have we have that in writing, yes.
Very good.
Yes, we are very excited about that. And then kind of along with this, um, we have done a lot with increasing our students' access to community-based instruction and work-based learning. But that really requires us to take students out into the community. Uh, we have students that are working in a lot of different areas throughout not only our district, but then we have some sites in Somerville that allow us to go there. There is, you know, the Voc Rehab in Colleton County. So transportation has been amazing working with us, but sometimes it's hard to find a bus or, you know, coordinate a bus driver, because there's a lot of things that are are going on. So, uh, Mr. Beckwith, and I know he spoke with y'all last year, was very open to us using our Medicaid revenue that we generated last year to purchase an activity bus. And I am so excited about this. Um, it should be here probably by the end of December or beginning of January. The great thing about this bus is it you don't have to have CDL to drive it. You do you do have to meet, obviously, state criteria. But that means that we can take students out frequently to allow them access to all kinds of work-based learning experiences. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. We're really excited about about that. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions?
No, that looks good.
Y'all are doing great work. Thank you. Next up, human resources, um, policies. Mr. Beckwith?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we have a second reading, final reading for a few, um, policies. Um, you have them listed out there. Uh, policy BDB, uh, the heading is Board Officers. That has been absorbed into policy BD dash R. So, that's a policy that we need to delete, um, tonight, to take it off. Um, we also have policy BDD, Board Superintendent Relationship. Policy BDE, Board Committees. Policy BDF and BDF dash R, Advisory Committees, School Improvement Councils. Don't be confused with School Improvement Councils with PTA and PTO, two separate things. But the School Improvement Council is required. Then we have ILB, ILB dash R, Test and Assessment Administration, and ILBB, ILBB dash R, State Program Assessments. And I'll let you all make your motions on that before we move to the new ones.
Board members, let's go ahead and start with BDB, the first one. This is the one that they're advising us to delete it because it's being added in another one. So.
Madam Chairman, I'm making a motion to delete BDB at this point.
Motion has been made by Ms. Sinbinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Are there any questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Now, we will need a motion to approve one, two, three, four, five, six, the seven, eight of them. And I think if y'all are okay with that, we could do it as one group.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, since it is our second reading. Okay?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the listed, um, policies at this time.
Okay. All right. Motion has been made by Ms. Sinbinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Are there any further questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. We've got those.
And then, we have first reading, um, for the board to review and make any adjustments. And, um, if there's any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to Ms. Smoke. Um, and then, as you know, she stays in close communication with the School Board Association. She gets any feedback, um, necessary. But it's a mouthful here, so. Uh, we have policy BDG, Board Attorney Legal Services. Policy BDH, which is Board Consultants. Um, policy BE, Board Meetings. Policy BEC, Executive Sessions and Open Meetings. Policy BEDA, Board Meeting Notification. Policy BEDB, Board Agenda. We have policy BEDC, which discusses a quorum. Um, that has been absorbed or is being absorbed into policy BE. So, that'll be a deletion of that policy. Policy BDD, Rules of Order, and policy JICJ, Possession Use of Electronic Communication Devices in Schools. Um, so, you can see we're on all, all the Bs there. We're almost wrapped up with the Bs. But that JICJ is the one that was sent out by the School Boards Association and required by state law to be implemented come January. Um, we've, the one that we adopted back in August, we had a special meeting to, um, put something in place that was going to be consistent with this. So, it would not be a change to what we currently have. The wording is going to be different. This is, you know, it's worded by School Board Association. But the content within this policy is the same as what we've been practicing, um, up to this point. So, the final reading for these would be in November. And then, we'll have a little, um, piece in there. We won't have anything because we're already doing that, um, communication, electronic communication devices. Any questions about those?
Any questions, board members? Just for the audience, I know it's hard for you to understand when you give a BDG dash R and a BDH, but these will be online. These are always online. And we don't approve them the first night they come out. It gives the board a chance to go and read these, and they're very complicated, a lot of them, and to check and with our staff and Mr. Beckwith, if there's anything in there that we feel that might not pertain to our district and we need clarification on it, we can always call the state. Um, but we, we do want to put these online. Once they are approved, they are online for you to read. Um, it's very complicated. And as you can see, it's a lot of words to be able to read out loud in a board meeting. So, we just want you to know that we're very transparent on these, and these are very, very important. And like Mr. Beckwith just said, one of them is a state law mandated. Those are very important, and we do have to pass those because those come down from legislative. So, board members, tonight, there are nine of them. Um, this is our first reading. Please take them and look over them very carefully. If you have any questions, reach out to Mr. Beckwith. If you feel that anything in here needs to be changed or edited or whatever, um, just reach out to Mr. Beckwith. And we will take these, um, next month for our second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith.
Sure. Just a reminder on that, um, electronic communication devices, this, I wanted the state passed down. If we do not approve it and implement it, or if we approve it but don't implement it, we risk all of our state funding. We're not in that position to do so, and, uh, that won't work for us. Want me to move on?
Sure. Superintendent report.
So, under my section, just a few things. Uh, I mentioned to you iReady. iReady took place of STAR at one point, and we had map testing. Map testing was the one that lived here for a, a long time. Um, and much of the country is starting to move over to iReady just because of the compatibility it has with, um, digital programming, instructional programming, um, on the computer for our students. So, they take the iReady assessment, and then, based on how they perform on the iReady assessment, um, they'll get lessons set up on their digital platform that are consistent with their weak areas. Um, our teachers set goals based on how the student perform in August. Um, and the hope is that we are able to push them forward. And what you probably saw tonight is, um, our growth is pretty consistent across, on SC Ready. Our growth is pretty consistent with other school districts. If you look around us, we sit at about forty-eight percent, fifty percent, um, which is great to be consistent with the state. But when our achievement level is low, we can't afford to continue to make consistent growth with everybody else. We have to, we have to make more growth. So, we started closing those achievement gaps. Um, so, you have in that report, and I would be happy to talk about it, um, anytime you want to, if you look at it and you have questions. Uh, but it shows you projected scores and reading projected scores by, uh, in math, um, by the district and by school. And it shows you also if our students make no growth at all this year, how we will perform on SC Ready, and it's very consistent. If our students make one-year growth, uh, which is about where we usually fall, we continue to make one-year growth, which is why our achievement levels stay lower than we would like them. But then, it also has a line in there, if we make the stretch growth. Um, and that's the goal that we, we aim for. And research shows if you make that stretch, stretch growth for two consecutive years, that student is going to be up where they need to be. Um, so, our schools have worked with that stretch growth. And, um, you know, not every child is going to get there. But if we get some of our children there, that's a win. And, um, but we have to, we have to be more intentional with our learning and our teaching to make sure we're moving those students as much as we can. It's not a question of our teachers working. Uh, they work extremely hard. They work more than people should have to work. Um, we just have to figure out how to make sure we're doing it the, the best way possible, providing the right content and making sure we're assessing students to see what they're getting and not getting. You know, I thought about meeting with y'all and having a little workshop to go over iReady. I think it's important for you all to understand it. Um, they'll do testing again in December. They do three sessions in August, August, September, um, December. And then, they do it again in March, which is a little bit early. But we need that data when it comes to teacher evaluation, since a lot of it's tied to SLOs for our teachers. But even with it being done early, it's still a, um, pretty good judge of how we're going to perform on SC Ready at the end of the year. And so, in November, we're going to recognize teachers and schools based on who's providing those lessons, those mini-leссens, um, throughout the day and throughout the week, throughout the month in their classrooms because they're directly tied to their weak areas on the iReady assessment. Thank you. Um, Schoolmen Grow, one of those pieces that we've talked a lot about is intentionality with instruction. Schoolmen Grow is a program that a few of us have used in other districts and multiple districts. It's designed to be a tool to provide quick and easy feedback to teachers when we go in the classrooms and see what they're doing. Um, it helps with the data keeping. It helps with coaching teachers, um, and it helps with communication. Um, it helps with professional learning communities and our PLCs and our training. There's a lot of components to it that is going to help bring intentionality to our instruction in our classrooms, um, that we have not been as strong or as intentional as we need to be. So, we have our final training. Our first and main training will be coming up here soon with the evaluation team. That'd be the principals and administrators in the school, and then, just a few people at the district level. Uh, but most of this work will be done at the school level. And this will not take the place of your formal evaluations that are required by the state. This is just walkthroughs. If you're doing a five-minute walkthrough in a classroom, ten-minute walkthrough, just to look for some, some, um, specific information. And then, the last thing we have is PTA, PTO update. Last board meeting that came up, and it was asked what schools had those programs. So, on that list, you can see what schools have it. We currently have an active PTA or PTO or PTSA in two of our five buildings. And you can see who the president is for those programs. Um, PTSA usually is a middle school, high school level. Uh, PTA is usually elementary school because of the student component. Um, elementary students don't usually serve on those, on those teams. But middle school and high school students can. PTO is free, and it runs as its own entity. PTA, PTSA runs as, under the association, so you do pay your membership dues and fees with that. Uh, but they operate the same, and they, uh, just a, a wonderful asset for the school if, when done correctly. Any questions about that?
Any questions, board members?
Now, that, like I said earlier, that's not a School Improvement Council. That's developed differently, and that's required, and it's every year. And they have their, um, required meetings and, um, required folks on those teams, those committees, to do what they're supposed to do. That's it for me.
That's it for you? Okay. At this time, um, the board will go into executive session to discuss a hearing report, review of booster club finances, personnel report, and also a legal matter. So, at this time, we need a motion to go into executive session. Dr. Hodges and Ms. Sinbinger. All right. At this time, we will go into executive session, and we will come back out. If there's anything in executive session to be voted on, we will do that in public when we come back out. Thank you all for coming. Congratulations again to all our students and our two local heroes for October. Ms. Goodwin and Ms. Coach.